Committee. Anybody take your place? Roll call, please.
He's here.
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 Alderman Jacob.
Here.
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 Here, we have a quorum. Next, I need the, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for January twenty fifty thousand and twenty-four. Any corrections to the minutes? We have no corrections, all in favor say aye. Next is report and recommendation, text amendments to allow recreational cannabis dispensaries. Director Springer, take it away.
Thank you Chairman Catalano. So I do have a brief presentation to give you a little bit of a background on what brought us here and some of the proposed language in the text amendments. So, um, back in two thousand and fourteen, the legalized Medical Cannabis Act was approved and medical cannabis was allowed in the state of Illinois. Now, local governments could not completely prohibit it. We had to allow it, but we could establish reasonable restrictions. And so what most of the communities did at that time was take a wait-and-see approach, which is, you know, similar to what Wooddale did. We passed an ordinance at the beginning of two thousand and fourteen, which permitted medical cannabis dispensaries and cultivation centers as required by the act. But we made them a special use and we had distance requirements from a variety of different uses. In, um, two thousand and twenty, in January, the Recreational Cannabis Act became live and it legalized recreational adult cannabis. In, again, this was more of a wait-and-see approach and we passed an ordinance in two thousand and nineteen that basically prohibited recreational cannabis. And I think the thought was after, you know, things have been around for a couple of years, we, the municipalities that were doing it had some experience with it, we would revisit it. So towards the end of last year, the city council asked that staff bring back the topic for discussion. And in October, police, finance, and community development departments provided information on cannabis and kind of the state of cannabis in Illinois. And at the conclusion of that meeting, staff was directed to go ahead and start drafting text amendments to allow recreational adult cannabis sales at dispensaries in Wooddale. So the PZB did also meet in January to provide clarification and direction on a few of the questions that staff had related to finalizing the text. And so we have done that and prepared some draft text amendment. The staff research included reviewing the law, the state law, collecting sample regulations from other communities, examining the IML Illinois Municipal League model ordinance, and we surveyed other communities. We surveyed thirty municipalities in the area and we found that twenty-three permit or allow cannabis dispensaries. This is the recreational type. And eighteen of those have dispensaries that are currently open. Now, I don't expect you to read this, but I'm referencing a chart that was in your packet and basically showing that the, the communities with the green all allow recreational cannabis sales and those with the red do not. This was another survey that we did of the eighteen that were open. We were interested in knowing where are they located in these communities? Are they in industrial districts? Are they in commercial districts? And what we found is that out of the eighteen, only three of them are actually located in industrial districts. All of the ones that are opening now, the remaining fifteen are in commercial zoning districts and basically on major arterials, they're in major shopping centers or strip centers. So, uh, staff prepared some draft, uh, language for the text amendment and had it reviewed by our legal team, um, who has seen this and approved what you have in front of you. We added some rules and definitions, obviously. And then we had to modify the existing section on medical cannabis that we had adopted back in two thousand and fourteen to make those types of uses instead of special uses permitted uses because most of these, actually all of these recreational cannabis places are also offering medical cannabis at the same time. We modified, um, so we do continue to allow medical and we would allow recreational in the same place. The medical cannabis cultivation centers, now those are where they grow the plants. Again, we can't prohibit those, so we've left them unchanged, the regulations for those. Those are big areas, there's usually odors involved with those. There's no additional revenue to the community for them. And so those are still going to be special uses and still will have those same distance requirements from a lot of different types of uses. So related to recreational cannabis, um, we added the use to the permitted use table. We created off-street parking regulations for them. The, the required number of parking spaces is very similar to retail, which is basically four per thousand or one for every two hundred and fifty square feet of the store. And we did update the sign code requirements to reflect the act. The act has quite a few restrictions on what type of signage is allowed or basically prohibited. Um, you can't use certain words or certain depictions. You can't have signage within certain distances of a lot of different types of uses that say any of those words, so we have incorporated those as well. There is also a section that will be added under Chapter Eight Taxes of the City Code and that, um, is to take advantage of the state-allowed municipal tax of up to three percent. From the communities that we surveyed, they are all taking advantage of that three percent. Um, and this would allow, uh, Wooddale to do that as well. Regarding, um, since these will be permitted uses, uh, the direction from council was to treat them similar to a liquor license. Our attorneys, uh, were cautious. They did not believe the, the length, the word license would be appropriate in this instance. So it's a certificate that we're off, that is included in the language. It works basically the same way as a liquor license and, um, the mayor would be the commissioner and can add, um, those.
Yeah, so I mentioned this to Jeff already. So when you say determine whether to issue individual certificates, they already have the okay from the city council. This is just for commercial occupancy, is that, is that what I'm looking at?
So they, in order to even apply for us, they have to have all of their state requirements and applications and approvals, which is very stringent. And then they, when they would come here, they, it's a permitted use. So if they're going to go into an existing building and they're not making any changes, then they could actually move in without any special approvals from the community. In order for the city to have some additional oversight onto that, um, they will have to apply for this certificate. And we have zero certificates available. And if somebody comes in and says, I want to come into this community, we have to issue, the, the mayor would make a recommendation and the council would have to approve whether we want to issue that certificate.
But, and I brought this up to Jeff already because, and he sent me something else. So at the end, in one of the other paragraphs, it basically just like the liquor license. Like this evening, we got a liquor license. Bring it forward, I read the letter, council, yea or nay? And same thing here, here, this statement almost says, I have carte blanche and I'll do whatever I feel like it.
It says adjourn.
But they will be brought before the city council.
I asked Jeff to change that language just so it doesn't look like the dictatorship is happening.
We can do that. So, um, distance restrictions for recreational cannabis dispensaries, we did discuss this at the PZB committee meeting, um, in January. And when we brought this to the CDC, a CDC member did mention that, hey, there's a private school up in the industrial district, so we went ahead and added that. So the areas shown, the numbers are the locations of this public and private schools in Wooddale. And the blue is the thousand-foot buffer. So no cannabis dispensaries could be located within the blue areas. The CDC held a public hearing on this and they did vote three yes to three no, which results in a recommendation for denial. That will kick up a supermajority requirement for the city council when this comes before them. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Go ahead, Alderman Correa.
In the revision, it mentions operating hours from eight to, uh, six AM to eight PM. The city, or the state allows opening operation till ten PM and I would recommend that change.
My apologies, that should have been changed in the text because that was the direction we got at PZB. I'm sorry I missed that.
Follow-up? Yep. Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
One thing I was going to ask is, and I don't know if this is a question for Brad or for you, Jeff. As far as, since these are cash businesses, like how do we really know how much revenue they're making, you know, that we're going to get a part of their taxes from?
I believe that is strictly regulated by the state. Um, so they have, uh, reporting requirements and the state is really heavily regulating these types of uses. So they're making sure that they're getting the, the accurate numbers.
Alderman Messina, I've got follow-up?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I asked a lot of these questions already, but I just, for public. Would we be able to regulate certain security restrictions? I had my first visit to one this week and it was very eye-opening, very different than what I had anticipated. So I mean, like, almost intimidating, like, would, could we dictate from a security standpoint, must have armed guards or must have X, Y, Z?
We actually do not need to do that because the state has those requirements. The cameras, they have cameras in the back, all throughout the facility so that the staff can't take anything. And so those are constantly monitored outside. There is an armed guard requirement and they, they do need to check your driver's license and scan it when you go in. So, um, again, there, it's very strict in comparison to some of the other states.
Alderman Gossis-Mosk.
Alderman Jacob's, uh, rebuttal to his. It's the same as the game, gaming is regulated by the state. They get a readout, everything's scanned from STEM to BUD to everything. I've read up on all that, so that's how you know where all your taxes are.
Alderman, um, Arden Woods?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendments to allow recreational cannabis dispensaries in the city of Wooddale.
I'll second that. Alderman Messina?
Deputy Chief, uh, Sisniewski, do we know? Like, I don't, I'm in there, like, do we know of any communities that have had, like, heists? Like, I don't, I'm not a criminal, but I'm in there and there is hundreds of thousands of dollars of cash that is just flying across the counters and I'm just like, this is like a movie. I'm waiting for somebody to kick the door open and just rob everybody. Like, do, do you know of any, I mean, to me, it, this to me is like putting a bank in the middle of Wooddale.
Go ahead, Chief, Deputy Chief.
So during our initial research, we did talk to all the different communities that were surrounding us, asking if there was an uptick in crime and things of that nature. All of them told us no, they didn't even realize the business was there and operating.
No robberies?
Nope.
Alderman, excuse me, Mayor? Yeah, again, that's why we're not going to have any open licenses. We'll have to see their plan. You know, we can determine because, so when you went to, it wasn't so hot. I went to two of them, take a look. One was, you know, really nice, the other one, little suspect, but, you know, it's business. So that's why I prefer they come to the council. And otherwise you open it up, first person through the door, it's mine, yeah, no. Thank you. Go ahead. And the three percent tax, that's automatic, is that how that works or is that part of the motion?
That is, um, included in the text amendment that you have before you. So, yes, it would be included in the motion because these are all text amendments to the city code.
Just making sure. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Nakwos?
Yes.
Alderman Coriales?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sisniewski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arden Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Kalam.
Upstee. Motion carries. Okay. Next is items to consider at future meetings. Cypress One, Phase Two, Annexation, Rezone, and Platte, that's coming up March fourteenth. And then also Cyrus One, Phase One, Special Use for PUD. And Platte, and that's coming up March fourteenth as well. And last is the Building Code Amendments coming up Spring or Summer of two thousand and twenty-four. And any other items to consider at future meetings? If they are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn. So all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you. I'll call the order of the Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics Committee meeting. Minute taker, please note that the same council members are present. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh, twenty twenty-four committee.
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have one item of business tonight. A request for additional class GS liquor license. Comments first, Deputy Chief?
Correct, we have one request for an increase in the GS liquor license tonight. It goes to three eighty-nine East Irving Park, the Exxon gas station.
Is, is the operator here?
I'm not sure, I have not met him myself. But he was invited to come tonight.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add one GS liquor license.
Second.
Questions? None? Roll call, please.
Alderman Nakwos?
Yes.
Alderman Coriales?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sisniewski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arden Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Kalam?
Yes.
That passes. So what do we got? Items to be considered at future meetings, none, unless someone wants to add something. Anything? Make a motion to adjourn? To move. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Return.
Calling the Public Works Committee to order. Uh, let the minute taker note that the same, all the, the same council members are present. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from January eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Item number one, report and recommendation, replacement of city equipment, number two forty-one dash one oh nine in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Do we have any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Woods? Oh, sorry, I was, sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Coriales?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sisniewski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arden Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Kalam?
Yes.
So that passes. Item number two, committee discussion on proposed locations for reconstruction of Water Tower One. I'm assuming we're going to do a small presentation for this.
Yes, sir, thank you, good evening, everyone. So as the chairman said, we'll be discussing the potential locations for the reconstruction of the water tower. It is currently located at the North Waste Water Treatment Plant and we'll be looking for a recommendation from the committee on a preferred location to proceed with the necessary environmental surveys and eventually the design. For the background to begin with, uh, back in two thousand and twenty-two, we presented the Water System Master Plan. That plan identified several deficiencies associated with the hundred-thousand gallon tower that supports the low-pressure zone. Uh, it was determined that those deficiencies would be made worse by continued development within the city, particularly within the Tiff District as well as, uh, the potential for multifamily developments along Wooddale Road. Uh, the report recommended replacing the hundred-thousand gallon tower with a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallon tower. And as the, uh, development within the Tiff District directly impacts the need for this project, it was determined that the use of Tiff funds would be appropriate. So H.R. Green completed phase, uh, preliminary engineering study to identify possible locations. First, I'm sorry. First, some considerations when looking for, uh, a location. Obviously, to support the lower-pressure zone, it has to be located on the, the lower-pressure zone. So if you can see the dashed purple line there, uh, that's the boundary between the high and the low-pressure zone, so it would need to be located south of that line. Ideally, it would be located near a point of high usage for the city as in, uh, near the town central business, central business district so that the water gets turned over more frequently and we don't need to water quality issues within the tank. Uh, it needs to be adjacent to a larger transmission main so we don't have any bottlenecking or restrictions at the point of the tower. Preferably, it would be on city-owned property so that we could avoid, uh, having to purchase property or acquire easements. And then, of course, there's constructability issues, having the necessary room for staging materials and equipment. You want the site to be accessible and secure. Uh, there's foundation concerns when building within a floodplain. And then, of course, the, uh, impact to residents. So the four locations that we've identified, the first, these are in no particular order and we'll go into each one in a little more depth here in a minute. The first location is the existing site at the North Waste Water Treatment Plant. The second, although it's a commercial street address, is right behind here at City Hall in the open field where National Night Out is held. The third is at the intersection of Addison Road and Forest Preserve Drive. And the fourth is the southwestern corner at the intersection of Irving Park Road and Central Avenue. So the first site is the existing site at the North Waste Water Treatment Plant. Obviously, the site is city-owned and secure and it has ready access to the existing main that's on that site. The main drawback to this location, uh, is that the existing tower would need to be taken out of service for twelve to fifteen months to build a new tower, which leads to some operational concerns for us, maintaining pressure within the system if there were to be an event such as a water main break or a fire. Uh, it's also located within the five-hundred-year floodplain, so there might be some added foundational issues that would lead to higher costs. And relocating the tower, uh, we would have to relocate the cellular facilities as well that are on that tower that we have leases for temporarily while the new tower is being built, so that might be adding expenses as well. Any questions on this location?
Alderman Messina?
Can you elaborate on the thirty percent contingency?
Sure, so anytime you're doing a conceptual budget, uh, it behooves you to add some amount of contingency in there just for the unknowns. We haven't done any soil borings at this location, so we're not sure if pilings would be necessary for the foundation. So at this very early on, without an, an adequate design, twenty-five to thirty percent contingency is just, uh, you know, a design standard.
I was just doing the quick math, so we said it could be closer to like four-point-five million? Things would be according to the plan?
Yeah, presumably, you know, depending on contractor availability and the price of materials, it could be plus or minus thirty percent of that cost.
Uh, one question I have is, what is the disadvantage of taking the water tower offline?
So we would be forced to run our pumps continuously at our pump stations in order to maintain the pressure. And then we would have no kind of reserve storage, uh, in the air to help maintain pressure in the event of pressure loss within the system such as a water main break or a fire, uh, you know, fire district using the fire hydrants and such. So we would have much more difficulty maintaining the pressure and the reliability within the system.
And then second question would be, when other municipalities have replaced theirs, do they usually keep it in the same spot or do they usually find a different spot?
Um, where Elk Grove has recently replaced their tower and they put it in a different location and utilized their tower while they were building it.
Okay. Alderman Coriales?
If we didn't put the water tower there, would we need that land for the water treatment plant or would it just be empty?
It, well, the land that is in that shaded area there would, uh, be empty. The land just to the north of there, if you could see that building, although it's kind of shaded, that's our, our UV building, that's the final point of treatment for the wastewater treatment plant. So there's a large sewer main which goes, uh, just to the east there that discharges into Salt Creek. And then we have the available space just to the north of that for if we were to ever add a, a future clarifier. So this corner, this very corner, would be empty.
So there's no real need for that property?
Correct. There is the possibility, if we were to explore solar options for powering the facility, it's nice to have that open space to put panels.
Okay.
All the woman names?
Have we ever tested if we could take that water tower down and not use it? That we would have any quick pressure for the city?
Sure, on a short-term basis, it's not a major concern. But when you're talking about twelve to fifteen months of having to run the pumps continuously, it puts a lot of wear and tear on the system, on the water mains, the cycling, the turn-on and turn-off. It's kind of a, an aggressive, uh, movement within the pipes.
Continue.
That doesn't seem like a very good option to actually, like, completely take that down for possibly a year and a half if you can really even know that you're going to get parts and things on time for that with delays.
It is definitely an operational concern for us.
One other question I had is, if we did choose that location, because of, because of the wear and tear, one of those pumps went out after a year or once a new tower was up and running or whenever, how much do one of those pumps cost or what kind of pumps are we talking about?
To replace, to replace one of those pumps is upward of twenty-five thousand dollars. And we have four pumps at the Potter Street Water Station.
Okay, so it's not a huge, it's not like a five-hundred-thousand dollar, and it's, okay.
Correct.
Uh, continue.
Site two is just behind here at City Hall in the open field. Uh, this property is owned by the park district, so not currently owned by the city. The major drawback here is the distance to the transition main. If you can see that dotted blue line that runs to the north from the tower and then east, that would all have to be either open-trenched or directionally drilled to put a new water main to reach, uh, the twelve-inch main that's on Addison Road. There is plenty of space back there to stage materials, uh, for construction. But it is also close to some residential properties, so that could be construed as negatively impacting those properties during construction and just maybe an ice ore later on once the tower is built.
Alderman Arden Woods?
This should not be quite the ice ore to the new apartment building that went up.
Continue.
Moving on. Site three is at the corner of Addison and Forest Preserve Drive. Really, the only thing this site has going for it is that it's owned by the city. Uh, it's also located within a floodplain. Uh, this was one of the FEMA buy-out lots. Uh, we would have to directionally drill under Addison Road to reach the, uh, the water main on the east side of Addison Road. It obviously has a high impact to the residents in that area and it's also the highest cost due to the lower elevation. The tower would have to be about twenty feet higher than the other two locations that we've discussed. So this is the least preferred option.
Yeah, how many resident, I mean, how many homes, I really can't tell from there. Are there homes along that street there or?
There are homes to the northwest and south of this location.
Okay, continue.
Site four is at the southwest corner of Irving Park Road and Central Avenue. Uh, from a strictly utility standpoint, this location kind of checks all of our boxes. It's, uh, in the central business district. Uh, it would allow us to keep the existing tower online. It has ready, ready access to a twelve-inch, uh, water main which runs north and south right along this lot. Uh, it also has the lowest construction cost due to the elevation. It would be twenty feet shorter than the other two locations, uh, discussed sites one and two. So the only drawback is that this site is not currently owned by the city. Uh, but you're likely aware that the, um, the city is also working with H.R. Green to signalize that intersection. And part of that would be potentially, uh, extending the southern leg of Central Avenue south of Irving Park Road. So you can see on the diagram here, and I shared with you at the dais, how that would lay with the proposed water tower. That central leg kind of takes up a portion of the property, really not making it a viable option for commercial redevelopment but supporting the development in the area nonetheless.
Alderman Messina?
Couple of questions. Could you repeat your last statement about the- Couple of questions. Could you repeat your last statement about the viability of a commercial development?
Sure. So it's kind of difficult to see on this diagram, but I, I handed out a copy to the council members. So if we were to realign Central Avenue to the south of Irving Park Road, you would need to take a portion of that lot to extend that road. That, that black double parallel line coming down from Irving Park Road is where the curb would be. So the curb would come, I don't know, maybe 10, 10, 12 feet into that, that property. Um, and then you're left with minimal space to, to develop anything further on that lot. It would impact the, the use of that lot.
And then you mentioned, you mentioned as well going south. We're not talking about punching through, which is the biggest?
Correct, correct. Yeah. Right now, essentially, Central Avenue to the south of Irving Park Road is a driveway to get to the alley. Uh, this would be making it a wider road with a, a signalized light, but not crossing the train tracks, correct?
I mean, I, I was for this signal in the first place because I was hoping that we can get a small drive-through through there like that could be easily developed, like the new concepts of you see of Starbucks. You don't need a big footprint or a, or McDonald's, McDonald's, any of those are becoming a lot smaller Dunkin' Donuts. So I guess I'm just saying where, where did you come up with this idea that it's not going to be a feasible development? Was that something that came from an engineer or is that just your, your opinion?
Uh, we have an engineer, I could defer to him, but just if you see, this would be if we were to extend that southern leg. Not that we have to, but if we were to extend that southern leg, we would need to take a portion of that property. And if I could approach the uh, model board here, just to give you an idea. So here's where the edge of the property lies now, and here's where the edge of the curb would be if we were to widen that road. So all you're left with really is this distance here to try to use as developable property, which is not much.
Can I ask the engineer a question?
Sure. Our engineer is Ravi Jairoraman from HR Green.
Hey, Ravi, so is it your?
Go ahead.
Is it your professional opinion that we could not fit a smaller retail drive-through or retail store in that? Are you saying this line is undevelopable, develop, undevelopable, is that the word?
Yep. It's going to be a challenge to develop the property, that's what I'm explaining. I mean, I don't know what.
Could there be a smaller footprint as we see now in development of the Starbucks, the Dunkin' Donuts, et cetera?
Like, Ravi is our, our engineer for the water project. He, he's not so much an expert on developments, although I'm sure he's very knowledgeable about it. But, so asking him if a Starbucks could fit on this, if we were to extend the street, I'm not sure, you know, if we could speak to that uh, you know, in a professional sense or not. We can give our opinion.
Speak to the water, so I mean, okay, so if there was a development on there, what impact would that have to the water as opposed to putting a water tower there?
I mean, what do you have the land, you already have the land, so we are trying to use the, better use of the land to put the water tower. It's just gonna, you're gonna have a small pedestal at the bottom, you're gonna have the thing on the top. It's not going to take a lot of land. So we are making use of the available land that, in that parcel of.
Why does it have to be a water tower? Why can't it be something else? I mean, you're saying there's a small footprint, whether I have a water tower or I have some commercial space, what's, what's the difference, I guess?
Uh, again, like I said, I'm going to just talk about the water, but.
I was talking what, like, what's, what's the difference? If I, what does it matter if I stand there instead of a cloud? Would, if it's the same footprint, right, space-wise, are, are you saying that a water tower is more advantageous for water runoff than something with the exact same footprint that would be revenue generating?
I'm not talking in terms of revenue.
I'm talking about water.
What, I'm just talking, looking at the four options that, that was available, this option seems to be a, a better option from a perspective because the way I look at it from an engineer, not a land developer, just from an engineer is, you got a parcel of land that the city is procuring. You're gonna have this uh, interchange being built, the roadway being built. You're gonna have a little area that's gonna remain empty.
What's the difference between this lot and the existing lot?
Existing lot.
Existing site and this one, there's no difference. What's the difference?
So the existing site, as it stands today, is larger than if we would extend Central Avenue to the south. And that decision is completely with the council. You don't have to extend the roadway to the south, but you're signalizing that intersection.
Well, why would I extend that, sorry. Why would I extend that if you're just gonna throw, if you're just gonna throw a water tower, what's the point of running it south? You might as well just stop the road and just, there's no point. Right, so they go around, they go, it's actually faster, it's more accessible through the metro station.
One, one thing, Alderman Messina, I, I think the mayor was saying that it's not, it's actually not developable land. Is that true, Mayor?
Nick, so basically, once you put the light there, you change that configuration. And with all the setbacks and things like that, it becomes property that's really undeveloped. And once you put, if you put the water tower here, then you don't have to ever worry about anybody punching a hole through to, down Central Avenue either, but it's, you know, we're looking at options. So the land, we've heard multiple times, it's undeveloped, so.
Alderman Messina, do you have any more questions or?
I just, I guess I'm more confused than when I started, so it's just me, I guess. I just, I don't, I don't know why we're having this conversation. I, I understand why we're having it. I know it's a little cheaper and I can get the offline part. I just don't know why this was targeted. If, if it's truly undevelopable, undeveloped land or unable to be developed, I guess we should say, I, I'm curious. I'd love to see that study, or I can vote, I just don't get it personally. That's just me, because I could name five other locations in the city that we could put this, like, in a commercial area or somewhere else within that spot that you mentioned that, so.
Okay, um, Alderman, let a couple of other people ask questions here that have their hands raised. Alderman Mrs. Marsky?
We, we could always put up another water tower in the Gushrow Park, correct, if we need one. I mean, I don't see us needing another one. You said this will fit.
So it has to be on the low pressure zone, which is basically south of Elmhurst uh, street in Ward Four. Elmhurst, the central booster station at Elmhurst and Central is kind of the, the boundary between the two systems. So everything south of there is the low pressure zone. So it would have to be located in the low pressure zone, preferably in an area where the water would be turned over more frequently.
Are you done, Alderman? Alderman Arty Woods?
I, I might have missed a bit. Did we say who owns the property now and is the cost of, the potential cost of purchase baked into the 5.7 or is it additional?
The cost of the land acquisition is not included in that cost, that's strictly construction costs. Uh, but it is a strategic plan item of the city to purchase lots for development along Irving Park Road. So this would uh, fit nicely for that purpose.
Alderman eighteen?
Have we taken into consideration if there's enough power at the, if it was this site or any of the others? If we have to add more like commel booster stations or anything like that to run the, the tower?
The tower really doesn't take much power. Uh, it, the tower floats on gravity, I'm, I'm sorry, the pressure from the main. Uh, the only power needed would be for whatever minimal lighting or our SCADA equipment.
Any additional questions? Oh, sorry, Eric.
So, a couple of things to the viability of the site commercially. Given setbacks, it's only a 58-foot wide lot, so given side yard, front yard setbacks, the fact that there would be a signal there, probably no good way to get into that property anymore off of Irving. So you'd have to punch the road through a little bit to get in off of there. But when you do the map and take the side yard setback, you need parking. So that 18 feet, you're taking away 25, 30 feet already, plus the other side yard of five. You're left with a building with the maybe 15 feet wide maximum that you could build. You wouldn't be able to get a, a drive through there if you could, to your point. If you could get a drive-through, there are smaller footprints, but I don't think you can get a, add the parking and a roadway to go through there and have any room for a building lot. And one other thing, so would, some of the concerns are the visual. Is there any way that we could get a uh, rendering of what that would look, the quick setup model of what the height of that and all that would look sitting on that street for the next year would be helpful?
It could be done, sir. We can get it done, yeah.
Alderman Messina?
This is a question, I guess, for Jeff. Um, I'd have, I'd have to look online, but isn't the pump location, the pump business to meet at the east of that for sale? That was my, maybe it's a question for Director Springer?
No, Mr. Burris?
Yeah, there's a parcel to the east of that for sale, along the far southern border by the tracks.
Alderman Messina?
So if we acquired that lot to the meeting east, could we not, would that not just debunk everything with what you just said about we now would have a bigger footprint to develop something on there?
Director Lang?
So to consolidate those lots, uh, Central Avenue is a right-of-way. We would have to vacate that right-of-way. We have several utilities. We have a 12-inch water main that runs through that easement, uh, that crosses the track, actually, that would need to be located if you were to consolidate those properties to, to try to develop it. Just FYI.
Alderman Messina?
Where is that easement located?
It uh, follows the road. That's actually, Central Avenue is a roadway technically, even though there is no road built there. So there's right-of-way through there and then uh, there's a water main and a storm sewer. Uh, I don't believe there's sanitary sewer main, but there's a 12-inch water main that runs just to the right of where that water tower is depicted.
Running north and south.
Correct.
So it could be moved. I, I'm just saying width-wise, right? Like, if we were to acquire the land at the meeting east, which is available, now you have something by it. Yes, we, there might be some incurred costs to move something, but now we, I mean, Irving Park is supposed to be where, where we get development, right? Like, up and down Irving. It's the last, I, I don't know, I don't know why we'd be moving the existing, but I, I just don't know why it wasn't mentioned, because I know we've been watching that, I've been watching that pump supply place, and when it went up for sale, I, I wasn't sure why we weren't going after that one, especially after Marino's lands even further east. We're trying to start a pattern, and this to me is just something right in the middle of the road that just stops the progress.
And this is why we presented several locations to the uh, the council for their recommendation. From a strictly utility standpoint, this is where we would put it, because it checks all of our boxes. Um, but the council has to weigh that with their desire for the future development of this area, so that's, that's why we're here discussing it tonight.
Alderman Ames?
We decided with the proposal, like, what style of water tower, because I actually wrote like a couple little show and tells. Um, so like this style with the bubble on top, or there's one that's like this that has extra storage on the side? Like, how big, just from looking at it like that, is it gonna look like this or not?
It's gonna look like the first one you showed, yeah. The one you showed in the middle is not a storage, it's just uh, it's like a leg, it's just a leg for the, for the.
Right, not water storage, but I know you could store equipment or, you know, this extra public work storage.
You could still store, uh, the base is wide enough that you could have an office there, so to speak. So it's, it's, you could.
Yeah, I've been in there before, I was an eye opener, so, okay, so it's just a regular like bubble, I don't know.
Yeah, they call it this, this is called sporadic style, so it's like a spear at the top.
Oh, okay, okay. And then to what Alderman Arty Woods asked for, like a rendering of what it would look like in the space, that's something we can get?
We can get it, yeah.
Mayor, did you have your hand?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that's you. Alderman Arty Woods?
Yeah, I, Director Springer?
Yes.
Could we, to Alderman Messina's point, could we figure out what the footprint, are you thinking it would be a drive-through business or? Could we figure it out since that is just geometry?
Right, I mean, I mean, anything side dot, I mean, we increased the width of the storefront, right? So now you have a point to a, maybe it's a strip mall that's running east and west, that faces Irving Park Road, that somebody can drive up and through.
Director.
Even though I'm not an Alderman, can I make a motion to table? Or ask somebody to make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Before, let me finish the question, so I didn't want you to answer it tonight, but could we?
Oh.
Put together on a sheet of paper, what, what could actually fit there, right? Because we know the components to go and we know the subback, we know the parking, we know a drive aisle. And that, that would give us better understanding. Would you?
I would agree with you.
I mean, when we get it, we don't have to agree, but at least I think visually, we'd all be able to see closer what, what fits there.
Director Springer?
We can absolutely do that. The building, the property to the west is 80 feet wide. The existing width of the current property is 100 feet wide. We could figure out what the setbacks were um, to accommodate that. There is a challenge with locating the signal there and not realigning the road. Um, because the area left for access onto Irving Park Road is very limited, so.
That was my first statement, you wouldn't be able to get into the site if we put the lights.
There is a little bit of room, but it's very much, um, it would be in conflict with the existing um, drive aisle that's there. It would be very close to that.
Should we put something, we could still better see the geometry at play there, if that's all.
So I'm gonna actually make a motion to the table, but I, I think for all of our sake, I think it would be nice to have a rendering of, well, besides where the water tower is at, we already know what it would look like, but maybe have a rendering of the other three locations that you're considering. But seeing that there's still a lot of questions, I mean, I think we would like to see a rendering, uh, table this for right now.
Well, I mean, can I, can I ask that we do, it sounds like Director Springer's doing it anyhow, but have a rendering for, it would look like that lot? Like Alderman Woods is asking for?
Sure, yeah, we can have a rendering. Uh, do we want to, instead of extending it to all four locations, do we want to?
Just, I, I think just that one, because the other ones are really under the way.
Sure.
The, the forest preserve one I cut out because now you gotta make that thing 20 feet taller, right, if I'm correct? So if you imagine ours plus 20 feet, that's a huge.
Correct, yeah.
And that's in a solid residential area, I'm a, I'm a hard no, that's not even a consideration.
I, I would definitely like.
This one's lower, so let's see how it looks. The rendering is going to show us what it's going to look like in relation to the massing of the other buildings.
Sure.
And maybe at least behind this, just because there's not that much residential, but.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Ald, uh, Alderman roll call.
What, you're? The table.
The table.
We made a motion to the table.
I thought we were gonna bring the information.
Yeah, we'll bring this information.
Yeah, they'll bring us the information.
I think at a, a future committee meeting, once again, we'll. Well, two weeks is the, the budget, so we would do it.
Well, I could have, as I was saying, can't take it to that council meeting, we could always. Well, to next week, we'd have a ready.
Uh, I, I would think better maybe the, the following committee meeting in March.
Spend 15 minutes at the next committee meeting. We have three meetings for budgets, so if we need.
And we usually don't use all those meetings.
Time for you to remember me to go. Okay.
Roll call, please, to table.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Missed state.
Alderman Ames? Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Kellam?
Yes.
That passes. Okay, uh, items to be considered at future meetings, 720 North Central Flooring, March 14th. Elizabeth Drive, Phase Two Engineering, spring of 2024. Square yard drainage program updates, spring of 2024. Anything additional? Okay, uh, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Make questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee, if the minute taken, please note the same members are present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January 25th, 2024. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes? If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
And that passes. Um, I do have one report and recommendation. I do have one report and recommendation, video gaming revenue, Dr. Wilson? Comments on that?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to, I guess, is it change the video? To move it back, to move it back into the Tourism Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund.
Sir?
Are there any questions or comments, Alderman?
So how are we gonna fill the void now that we're taking a total of $688,000 over the years that that response is being gone, and how are we gonna fill the void?
Director?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chairman. So a couple of different things, one, you know, the rate increases from a couple of years ago have been working as we had hoped that they would to stabilize the water fund and to get things going back in the right direction from a fund balance cash flow position. Additionally, you know, some of the additional users, specifically RKC, are producing a significant amount of revenue for the fund. And that's gonna be used to help stabilize that as well as, you know, hopefully be able to address some of the rate increases that we're expecting from the city of Chicago for the next few years. So in the, in the short term, for the next, probably at least two to three years, there won't be really any issues with the water fund as it's constructed currently. You know, I believe you saw in the CIP, we are gonna start to, hopefully based upon some other projects, start to contribute some additional money for future capital expenses, which will also help to further shore that up and help to mitigate future rate increases.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Messina?
To Alderman Catalano's point, like, this is great, and I'm not saying you're lying, but could we actually see what these things are being forecasted at? I mean, I remember a big development coming online that said they were gonna solve the world's problems, right? And we were gonna, our bills were gonna go down, and I've seen no change, and only it appears to seem to change. So while I have full faith that some of the things that have come online will make it, you know, will help, can we see, do you have like a rolling forecast? Now that a few of these businesses are online, so that we could actually see the numbers? And know and feel comfortable that like if we pull the plug on this, that that will fill the gap?
Yes, we can, however, you know, boy. Yeah, I mean, the bigger problem here really is the Tourism Fund. The document you're gonna get tomorrow shows that it has about $100,000 deficit for next fiscal year. If you don't move this money back, it's gonna be 300,000, and it's already half a million deficit already. So the real issue here is the Tourism Fund, not the Water Fund. So, I mean, you know, we can get you some projections on some of these developments, that's fine. But the real, the real, you know, elephant in the room here is the state of the Tourism Fund, not the Water Fund.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Alderman Arwood?
I was just gonna say, I think we're gonna be discussing them shortly from the budget.
Correct.
Mayor? Mayor, please?
Number one, the staff can't guarantee that they're never gonna raise the water again. But I guess the council can, if you all vote no for any water rates, then they'll plug those holes and they'll tell you what projects you can and can't do, like I've said for many years. But we need to fix that Tourism Fund, and this was gonna be a temporary deal, we've had some things happen. If we all looked at the CIP, they're looking to put in a million dollars in about four years or five years to the Water and Sewer Fund. So again, we need to take care of the Tourism Fund, the Water Fund is an enterprise fund, we raised it twice. I've asked the staff, are we gonna need to raise it right away? They go, we should not, and Mr. Wilson just said two to three years, can we guarantee what's gonna happen over the next two or three years? No, but you know what, we need to do what's right, we need to move this money back where it belongs so we can take care of that fund.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just one point of clarity, because I know it came up in some conversations I'd had, I believe, I don't remember who, with who actually. Would this be an immediate change or effective with the beginning of the next fiscal year?
Mayor?
I would hope it's immediate, but I didn't make the motion and I'm not the seconder, so I will ask the motion or the second, right, it should be immediate.
I would make the motion to have it effective immediately, should it pass, and not wait till the beginning of the next fiscal year.
I think you really just said.
I'd agree.
Alderman Messina?
But can we see those forecasts before the, before it's official, before the next city council meeting?
So a couple of things, one, I mean, it's direction to staff to do that, second of all, the budget's going out tomorrow, so whichever way I go, it could go out potentially wrong, it's already built a certain way. So, I mean, I can go back downstairs and work for three hours and change it back to just change it back a week later, so.
But you wouldn't have changed it with, with the assumption that we were just gonna move it, I guess I'm not following, what's the word, you didn't do?
Yeah, I mean, so, well, assumption had to be made, because it's going out tomorrow.
So that's, okay, so the assumption is that we were moving it back, moving, yeah, okay. Do you assume that this is going to be moving past?
Yes.
You're one of my favorites, but that's not my problem, if you took, you assume that everyone's just gonna nod their head and say yes, as opposed to being against it, right? Like.
And, and yeah, if my assumption is incorrect, then that's on me, I'm gonna be here until midnight tonight anyway, so I'll just make it 1 o'clock, that's fine.
Well, we're still discussing the budget too, the budget is finished, we saw.
And if you wanna move it back in two weeks, then you can move it back in two weeks.
Well, the big reason you made that assumption is because you'll see when the budget message goes out tomorrow, the city council's violating their own budget policy by falling below standards in certain funds. So we assumed that everybody would not want to violate their own fund balance policy.
No, I'm not saying you're right and wrong, I'm playing devil's advocate, right, like on some of these things, right? So I'm, of course, obviously, we need, I just wanna make sure if you guys are making the statement that we have to plug these holes, we have a means to plug them. I'd rather you say we don't, we're really in even bigger trouble, right? Like, my question's led to you saying, let's bring the elephant, you know, in the room out, and you did, right? Like, that's, that's a problem we gotta fix, I think we all know that. But I wanna know if you're saying that these things are hopefully going to fix the problem, all these businesses, I'm just, I don't wanna hear that anymore. Like, to me, I haven't seen it, and, and so that's why we've been kind of crippling, I'm not saying this is the right answer. But we've been telling people, like, wait till this comes online, this is gonna change the world, you're gonna have no bill, we're gonna be like Rosemary, we're gonna give her rebate. And it's like, no, it's not.
They haven't been online for a year, you think we ever said that?
Well, we never said we were giving bills water rates going down, what we said is they would hold constant. And if we've been paying attention and listening, staff has been telling everybody that the big business has come online, they've been online, they're using over a million gallons of water per month, those are the numbers that are reality, so I don't know what else you want them to forecast. They've been online for months, they're using over a million gallons per month, so that's a known entity already, it's not fictitious, it's not in the future, it's here.
See it, if we're saying we're gonna fill the hole with them, then it's off, but so, you know, I'm not saying, again, it doesn't fix the fact of what you just said, right? I get that, I'm not, I'm just saying, let's fix everything, if we're going to rip the Band-Aid off, let's fix everything and that's fine, even better, then I have a better story to tell, we have all this money coming in because these businesses are online and they're gonna go to the Tourism Fund, hallelujah, we're gonna build you a Ferris wheel.
But you wanna buy another property over there?
Wait, what?
Mayor, please?
Again, Tourism Fund is short, because we've taken money out for years. It's supposed to be a two-year deal, it's been, I don't know, eight, six, I don't know, whatever. We need to take care of this. I'm not understanding what the problem is. When, we might have to make decisions and cut projects, but everybody wants to add projects. Come on. Do we, do we need the hammer to fall on our heads to realize that we need to take care of this, this fund?
Alderman Jacob?
Not on my head.
I guess the only thing I would add is, yes, we keep adding projects, but we're also adding more and more events and spending more and more money from the Tourism Fund, like the Prairie Fest, bigger bands, all these concerts, so we're also adding a bunch of money there.
Mayor, please? Mayor?
So that's why when there's an increase in festivals or whatever, it comes to the council, if I remember right, I think we had a unanimous, oh no, we had one opposition, everybody else voted for it. So we either vote for things or not, come on. Everybody wants, but now they're gonna bring you the, you could easily have said, hey, we don't wanna increase the fest or summer events at all, eliminate them and start taking care of that problem, but we chose to increase, we chose to attest, unfortunately, it's not quite happening this year. But again, those come to you, that's why it always comes to you, any committees in the bank, come up here. And we vote for it.
I guess my only comment to that is, well, we did talk about it, we didn't talk about how much in the negative the Tourism Fund is, and unless I might have missed it, which I could have.
We had a workshop about that. There was a whole workshop, there's nothing for that.
I guess so, I'm wrong then.
Alderman Messina?
Does the Tourism Fund, does the Tourism Fund fund the streetscape, the Grand Sevilla? The facade program, excuse me?
Oh, sure, now the facade program is funded by the CIP, by the Capital Improvement Program.
Not Tourism Fund, okay.
Yeah, the Streetscape Committee itself, any of the smaller projects like the planters up front of City Hall, when not, that came out of there. But what we discussed at CIP, the park planning, that comes out of the capital, but not the Tourism Fund.
Good, thank you.
Okay, can we take a roll call, is there anything else? A roll call, please? Alderman Arwood?
Yes.
The motion. The motion.
To move back the funds from the sewer.
Gaming money.
The gaming money, sorry, from the Water Fund to the Tourism Fund. Immediately.
Okay, roll call, thank you. Alderman Arwood?
Yes.
Alderman Perry Ali?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Because it's the right thing to do, yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames? Yes. Alderman Arwood?
Yes.
Alderman Kellerman?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, CIT tip request to be determined and fiscal year 25 budget on February 22nd, are there any other items to be considered? There are none, then I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I like it.